... meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance and this evening I'm going to ask Seamus to...
Yes. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There we go. There's only one item on the agenda this evening, but before I can do... Before we begin, I do want to make an announcement that if you wish to speak on the agenda... On items that are on the agenda or even not on the agenda, please fill out this little piece of paper. It's over there on the side credenza and give it to Katie. Katie will pass it to me. I will call up individuals in the order that I receive these papers. And in the interest of fairness, each person speaking has three minutes. And there's a clock over here that will kind of give you a countdown. And the three minutes does not apply to the presentation of staff or the applicant. Okay, first item on the agenda is presentations by public on matters not on the agenda. And I believe the slips that I have are on item number one on the agenda. Correspondence and staff communications from Mr. Tilly.
Yes Chair Lebig, we have one item, front of view memorandum from Mr. Laffey regarding agenda item number two. And I do have some additional background available for the commission's consideration on when we get to item C, if that would benefit the commission.
Okay, if... Actually, since item C is next on the list, item C is regarding the city's recent start of relationship with AARP. And this evening we'll be making nominations for the representative, the Planning Commission representative for... An alternate, sorry, for age-friendly communities... Sorry, this is committee. For the Age Friendly Communities Advisory Committee, so...
Yeah, just by way of background, the city is now a member of the ARP network of age-friendly communities, which really is a global effort that makes cities great places by facilitating improvements with... Within eight livability domains. And those go a lot of things, cover a whole gamut of transportation, housing choices, civic participation, et cetera. So we have to go through a fairly detailed self-evaluation process to secure this. And so we are sitting up an advisory commission to help with this because there's so many of these topics, they cut across all of our, you know, current commissions. So no one commission can handle, you know, all of these topics. So the mayor is seeking a representative from the Planning Commission as well as an alternate member of the Planning Commission for this. This committee is expected to meet periodically and provide recommendations, you know, to the council as we move forward in this. And so this will be, you know, likely throughout next year. The frequency of meetings will be, as it says, periodically. So with that, we would seek the commission's recommendation on your member and then your alternate member. And I did confirm that our alternate Planning Commission member, Ms. LaPore, is eligible to be either of those persons if the commission so chooses.
Thank you, David. Let's take this first one at a time, just looking for nominations for the representative.
So Chair Lebig, Commissioner Kelter and I have been participating in a couple of the workshops that have been ongoing related to AARP in partnership with UC Davis as well as the city of West Sacramento. And I think that he's expressed a lot of interest in being involved in this. For those of you who aren't familiar with him, he has contributed an incredible amount of volunteer work towards sustainable communities. And he has built his decades-long career on health and healthy communities. I think that he'd be really passionate and I think he'd be great as a representative. So I'd like to nominate Commissioner Alex Kelter, M.D., as the representative to the Age Friendly Communities Advisory Committee.
Would you like a second on that?
First, I'd like to hear if there are any other additional nominations for the representative. Okay, so I will take a second.
I'll second that recommendation.
Okay, all in favor of Mr. Kelter, Dr. Kelter, being the representative for the AARP? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, alternatives. I would actually like to nominate Bernadette. As she mentioned, she has been also going to some of these ARPs and her background in urban design and interest in mobility, I think, oh, as well as senior living, makes her a great candidate for this as well. Are there... Any other alternates? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have a representative and an alternate.
All right, thank you very much. We will forward these names on to the city clerk's office. And I presume that those folks that will be on this will be contacted with further instructions once this comes to pass.
All right, thanks. Disclosure of ex parte communications. At this time, planning commissioners should disclose any communications they've had with members of the public or the applicant. And that would be for item number two. Head nodding, no? Okay. Moving on to consent agenda, consideration and approval of the minutes from the November 19th, 2015, commission meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Sternfield, seconded by Commissioner Guerrero. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? No, great. Okay, regular agenda. This is item number two. Public hearing regarding the conditional use permit for a proposed wireless telecommunications facility located at 2150 Stone Boulevard. Mr. Laffey.
Good evening Chair Lebig and members of the commission. The wireless facility proposed tonight is located at the corner of Sebrian Street and Stone Boulevard. The location is within 500 feet of residential properties to the east. The proposed tower is 80 feet tall and the monopine design would be 85 feet, with the extra five feet being from the branches. The applicant provided two design proposals, one is a monopine and the other is a monopole. To the west of the project site is a NorCal bottling plant. The project site itself is located at the NorCal corporate office. That's the office building right there to the east of where the site will be. The site is right there at the corner. And then to the south of the site is a office building with predominantly medical offices. Since the agenda report was published last week, staff has received concerns from multiple commissioners regarding the design, placement, and type of wireless facility proposed tonight. Staff also received a comment letter from a resident located near the proposed facility and who opposes the tower. Staff worked with the applicant since the publishing of the agenda report to address some of these concerns. And the applicant provided some alternative designs for the fence on the bottom there. They have a wall they designed instead of the chain link. If the commission would like some additional information or designs of the actual tower itself, this item could be returned at a subsequent date. And the applicant does have a very brief presentation as well.
Okay, before we open up the public hearing, Seamus, I did have a question, just getting to the policy, the city's policy on this. The commission worked on this last year. And there was an order of preference kind of written into it. Would you mind just kind of going over it so we have that fresh in our mind?
Yeah, I'll try to tackle that one. We did work on this quite a bit at the Planning Commission. Been a couple of years now and also at the city council to try to modernize and update the policy, which before that was, you know, 1990s, you know, vintage. As we all know, this industry has, you know, evolved significantly since then. Our policy generally spells out, you know, sort of the approval process for the different types of wireless facilities that are out there. There are many types, including the building-mounted ones and roof-mounted facilities, which we have done a few here in town. And then there is also then the freestanding facilities that may come in various different forms, but at their essence, they're all pretty much the same. You know, they're a, you know, a structure that's primarily there to elevate, you know, the antenna up to a certain elevation to provide some of the coverage objectives. So generally, our preference has always been to try to, you know, building mount or facade mount, these wherever possible. You know, we don't have a lot of buildings that probably are sufficient height, you know, for that, but to the extent we can do it where we could, it has been our preference. And so the way the wireless policy, you know, reads is it does provide a more streamlined approval process for that type of application. Most of those can just go through the zoning administrator and wouldn't need to come to the Planning Commission. When... And also moving into some facilities that would be in industrial districts where they are not within certain proximity to any residential areas, even if they are freestanding, they also may go before the zoning administrator. However, when you are talking about a freestanding facility and you are within 500 feet of residential property or a few other criteria, those are the kind of projects that would come before the Planning Commission, you know, such as the one tonight. Although the tower itself may be more than 500 feet from residential. The property where it's going on is certainly within 500 feet of some of the residential off the Park Boulevard neighborhood to the east. So our policy explains and provides for the criteria by which, you know, the city can consider these. Should remind the commission that our discretion on these types of projects is very limited under state and federal law. And aesthetics is our primary area where we do have discretion. But beyond that, you know, we are limited and Mona will caution us if we start to go beyond perhaps where we should go. This, our policy explains some of the application materials that would come in, some of the design options that could be considered by the commission. And ultimately, this, you know, it does, you know, show what we favor, but in the end, each project has to stand on its merit. And even if it would be our general preference to have a facade mounted or roof-mounted application, it does not mean that someone could not do a freestanding facility. It just means that it would come to the Planning Commission for this broader level of review, such as what we have before you this evening. And then, of course, our policy expresses our intent to comply with all applicable state and federal law, of which there is a lot on this type of facility. So that's sort of the Cliff Notes version of our wireless policy. I'd be happy to answer any more specific questions about it for the commission.
Thank you, David. That was exactly the level I was looking for. I'm going to go ahead and open the public comment period. And if the applicant would like to speak, I'd be happy to hear from you.
Hello. My name is Michelle Wells and I work for Epic Wireless and we build for Verizon Wireless. And I want to start by saying that Verizon wants to build a tower that the community and the jurisdiction is happy with. And we try our best to look at the wireless policies first and go through what David just went through. David and Seamus and I have met, definitely Seamus and I have met over quite a few times on, I have three projects that I'm going to be building in West SAC. So I'm very aware of your wireless policy. And we do try to go through co-location, rooftop, building top, freestanding as our last resort. However, there's so many different aspects and issues that come into play. A lot of times, that doesn't always work out. So I can say for this project, it started in 2013 when we first got our search ring. And the way that we start any kind of site preparation is the RF engineers determine that there's some kind of hole in capacity and coverage. And the determination in 2013 was to the, it would be east of this picture. And the first location was a co-location on a Crown Castle lattice tower that was located at 1991 South River Road, which I think is considered Pioneer Bluff area. Is that correct?
Yeah, that property is the city's former sewer treatment plant.
Okay.
So we were all set to co-locate on that tower. It was a 95-foot tower. It was nicely located along the waterway, which is... We're offloading Rayleigh Field, the KX TV tower that we currently have, and the Port of Sacramento. And we started the process and it was going two or three months in. And we became aware by Mr. Aaron Laurel, the city's economic development manager, told us that that was actually a redevelopment area and that that tower was going to have to come down and it was going to be moved. And at that time, no one could say unequivocally when it was going to be moved or how long that would take. Since when there's a hole of this magnitude in the network, we like to try and have the tower built as expediently as possible. And since we had no way of knowing where that tower was going to go, if it was going to be in the search ring or how long it would take to get it back up, we had to start looking elsewhere. During that period of time, RF re... Not allocated, but they reevaluate what the needs are in the area. And as you all know, West SAC is growing and shifting. And so the search ring was moved to this area, which you can see is...
Actually, if you put it down on that table, there's a... Is that working?
We would like to use that document camera there, possible. That way our audience at home will be able to see it as well. I'm not certain. Okay.
There you go. So if you slide it towards... There you go.
Turn it around the other way? Yeah, flip it upside down. There you go. Perfect. Thank you.
So the new search ring was right here on the border of Sebrian and Stone. Prior to me being on this site, the site acquisitions specialist at that time looked at the buildings that are within the search ring.
Could you speak into the microphone? It's a similar thing of being able to hear it on TV.
Looked to the buildings that are within the search ring. And the first thing that we do is try to find out if the landowners would be interested. There was limited interest in the area. There was also an element of whether the buildings, if we roof-mounted, are tall enough for what RF requires. So we did come up with three industrial, light industrial buildings that were along Stone and Sebrian. One of them being NorCal Beverage, which is where we're at. The other was on Del Monte. And the other one was on Sebrian, which was down the street from NorCal, which I have a picture of. So NorCal Beverage would be, I guess it's south, so right here. So it was farther up the street, closer to the residential neighborhood. That area, because it was so much flatter and there wasn't a building in front of where the tower would be, we decided that residential would have been more affected in that location than the location that we chose, which is closer to the corner and along the port. So that was one reason why we chose NorCal Beverage over this location. And then the other landlord, I'm not sure what happened, but either negotiations or something broke down. And this ended up being our prime candidate. In the meantime, the Port of Sacramento, which I know was another question, why we didn't go to, there's a, I believe, the water tank at the port. First of all, the water tank is, it was estimated to be about 60 feet. And we need about 80 feet to talk to the other towers that we're networking with. And also at the time that the site act person that was working on this before me was looking at it, they had two carriers and they didn't have the room. They have since, during the last year and a half, lost Sprint. So they do actually have one less carrier, but it still ends up being kind of a problem for us because the height isn't there. So...
Could you repeat? Which structure was this one?
This would be, I'm sorry, I kind of jumped around. But one of the questions that Seamus forwarded to me from the commissioners was why we didn't go to the Port of Sacramento as a location. And I'm trying to address the water tower at the port, which was very close to the search ring. So another part of the analysis that we do in these sites is, like I said before, we go to the wireless policy and we did try to co-locate first. We did look to the rooftops and the buildings to see if we could building mount, but we were having some trouble with height. The medical facility that is across the street from NorCal Beverage is taller than NorCal. However, most medical facilities just don't want wireless near them because of different interferences with x-rays or the appearance of... I'm not sure exactly, but there's just kind of a policy to not have that on hospitals or medicals office buildings. So that wasn't really an option for us. If there's any other questions that I could try and answer that you had, I know some of you had questions prior to this hearing. I could try and answer them now.
Because we have requests to speak this evening, I think it would be best to allow the public to speak first.
Sure.
And then withhold the ability to bring you back up for follow-up questions. Would that work?
Sure.
You know, I did say that I was going to call these up in the order I received them. Unfortunately, I have lost track of the order. I apologize. But there are two. I have two, Marlon and Shen. So I'll first call up Marlon. If you could pronounce or say your name when you get here, that would be great. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Marlon Colombe, C-O-U-L-O-M-B-E. I live at 1948 Deerwood Street. I've been there for over 30 years. And just like everything else, I don't want this in my backyard. I'm within 500 feet of it. I don't want it in my backyard, plain and simple. Everybody I've talked to on Deerwood Street, on Park Boulevard, they do not want it. If medical facilities don't want it near their place, I don't want it near my house. So if you guys need to, if you need me to get a petition going, I can walk the streets and get a petition with all the neighbors. And everyone I've talked to said, no, they don't want it in their backyard. NorCal Beverage Corner is too close to the residential area. Norcal Beverage Corner is too close to the residential area. I sent a letter to the planning commission. They should have it on file saying that I don't want it. That's it for me. Any questions of me? I know if they put it in Acorn Court, Mr. Moore wouldn't want it.
Thank you, thank you so much. Shannon Olson?
I live at 1960 Park, which puts me within the 500-foot range of the tower. And when I received the letter, I started researching cell towers and a lot of the research that I read said that they shouldn't be placed within 1,500 feet of a residential area. And I'm just very interested in why it would be even considered, you know, to be placed within 500 feet of a residential area and put that population at risk. And that was my concern.
Okay. I think we can address that.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. First, back to staff, addressing the 500 feet, 1,500, actually, we can go closer than 500 feet here in West Sacramento. My understanding of the data is it's unclear on that. But David, is, is there anything that you would like to add on, on this? Our policies certainly allow it and I could go into the, the push actually have cell phone coverage based on people's use of cell phones essentially is driving it.
Kind of a two-part answer on that, so I'm going to let Mona go first.
Thank you, Charlie Big. I'm going to address the legal component of it. For the most part, federal law preempts state and local laws when it comes to the siting and regulating of cell phone towers. In fact, the only two real realms of jurisdiction that remain for local agencies are the design and aesthetic impacts of cell towers. So the city can decide what the cell tower looks like and how it's going to be constructed and what materials. We also do have some land use authority in terms of siting. However, upon a demonstration with evidence in the record by the applicant that the setback requirements that our policies depict, if they can demonstrate that there would be a significant gap in coverage and there's no other feasible alternative on a property that they own, then we must consider that. And if we don't, it would be considered an effective prohibition on that cell tower. So again, it's, it's not really within, we don't have very much control. Federal law controls this aspect and tells us what we have to do.
And to follow on that, part of the reason why sometimes these cell towers are posed near or inside residential areas is because it is in fact that area that they are attempting to cover. I'd like to direct the commission's attention to Attachment Five in your staff report, which is some of their, their coverage maps that they have, you know, provided and admittedly, if you're colorblind like I am, the colors here are not easy to decipher, but what they're, what they're attempting to show in these maps is sort of existing and existing coverage levels and without, and then with the tower. We may want to have our applicant sort of elaborate on these, but this is a common thing that we get on all of our applications that show the existing and then with the proposed facility and how the coverage changes, both in terms of strength and then it's just its, its geography. So this, you know, this is a sort of the next frontier, if you will, where we remember these used to be car phones and they used to be down the freeways and they came into commercial areas and then now everybody has, you know, seven smart, smart devices at their home that they want to work, you know, fast. So this, we have seen this before. There's, there is an existing site at a church in this Park Boulevard neighborhood that was a co-location. Delaware Park in that neighborhood, we considered a few years back. So it is not, not unheard of. In fact, it is becoming increasingly common that facilities are in adjacent or even in residential neighborhoods. This project is forward here, is, the property site is within the 500 feet of residential area. However, unlike some of the previous ones we have considered, this one does meet the setback requirements in terms of being at least, you know, twice the height of the facility, you know, from the nearest residential, his own property. So I, I would, if, if it's possible, I would like to have our applicant, if it's commission's pleasure, to elaborate on some of these coverage maps.
That was actually what I was going to ask for next. Ms. Wells, if you'd like to step back up and particularly to address Ms. Olson's comments and the, the need to demonstrate a coverage gap with no alternatives.
Yes. So I have all kinds of pictures, but I don't have the coverage maps. Can I borrow yours, Gina?
Katie, are these not in the presentation?
Oh, they're not, but I can, I can show them. Do you have the maps up?
We do.
We do, yes.
Okay. So this is the existing coverage now.
Ms., Ms. Wells, I, as painful as this is, I know you can't point to the paper and talk in the microphone at the same time.
All right. So, color's kind of funky, too. This is a colored map of the existing coverage without the proposed tower. The dark green underneath the names that you see are towers that we have existing currently. The waterfront area you can see has gray, it's kind of hard to see, but there's gray, yellow, and some orange, which means that the coverage is significantly lacking in that area. And this coverage is not just for cellular phones, just to be clear, this is Wi-Fi, this is for data. This is if you're working on homework and you're searching on your iPad for research, texting, all of, all of this comes from the same radio frequency and the towers create a network to allow that flow. So where there's more residential area, where there's more students, where there's more business people working from home or people with home businesses or, you know, just getting your Christmas card lists off the internet or addresses or things like that, you're going to be using the radio frequency data that is coming from this network. So...
Excuse me. Is green good or is green bad? Or is red good and is red bad?
Green is good. The green, I believe the green is good.
Green's good, okay.
Yes.
I'm going with you now. I got it.
The reason that I say the green is good is because it's where the towers are. So some of these are different colors. So, yeah, did I say that wrong?
I don't know.
I'm sorry. Did I confuse you?
I was just trying to make sure I understood.
Okay. So then, this map shows... Just the coverage of the proposed tower. So with the additional waterfront tower online, it will provide the amount of, it looks gray, but it's actually green coverage, which will expand and overlap on...
Port of SAC.
A little bit of the KV TV Channel 10 Tower and a little bit almost to the Sutterville Inland Park Tower. This map shows with the waterfront tower online how the majority now is the green-gray coverage, which means that there's less coverage and capacity gaps than there were prior to the tower being online. Sorry, this, the color's not coming out so well. I know that the, the FCC has special safety precautions for cellular towers and I also know that Verizon is about, it's, it's like 1,000% less than the FCC's percentage safety rating for the RF waves. When the towers are that tall, the waves speak to each other on a very high level and it's not as dangerous to the residents. It's actually not dangerous at all. It's been shown by the FCC that cell towers are acceptable. Any other questions?
I, I do have some questions, but before I jump, jump into it, because there, there are a couple of points that I want to make sure that we hit. One of the requirements is demonstrating a gap in coverage and I, I believe you have demonstrated a gap in coverage. But we also need to look at the alternatives and exhaust the alternatives before, before moving forward on this. And so I want to make sure that we have addressed this, but before we conclude, I would also like to double back. When you mentioned, well, I guess that's on that note, the, the water tower on the port, that there's an opening there. So I would like to have a discussion on that regarding alternatives, although you mentioned that's at 60 feet and you'd like to be higher. So maybe we can have a discussion of what the minimum height requirement is for you. And then, then I have a question for staff, but I don't want to lead the discussion. Perhaps you can work those in as the other commissioners ask questions. Yeah. You know, I know Charlie's got questions, so I'd ever want to get mine out there.
No, I'm fine. You want me to ask my question?
I'll start on your end.
Okay, that's fine.
I know you have questions.
I guess my question is, first off, I didn't realize that we had a cell tower on the water tower. I actually thought that we had a cell tower on top of the silos that said Port of Sacramento on it. And if you're telling me that, I thought that's, that'd be a heck of a lot higher than what you're asking for, if you could go on there.
On where, I'm sorry, that confused me, that question.
The Rice Buildings?
Well, no, right there in the port.
In the port, okay.
Have you ever driven to the port? And there's a little tiny sign that says Port of Sacramento.
Now, where is that on the map on there?
Across the street. Anyway, I thought that we had a cell tower up there at one point.
I, I believe there may be facilities actually on both the water tank as well as at the top of the Rice silos.
You know, and my, I guess my question was, and that was my original question, is why wouldn't you want to go there? That seems like a perfect alternative for you and there's plenty of room up there, I would think.
Plenty of room on the Rice Building or...
On that, David, I don't know how to tell her where the sign is, what it is. It's part of the port, I would think, but it's, I think the Rice silos...
There are the large Rice silos. Those are the ones that say Port of Sacramento at the top. They're, you know, very, you know, very tall and prominent there. I believe there are facilities at the top of that or have been.
And I, I guess my question is, could you at least look at that? And I'm sure that you could, you know, but that would be, one of the ideas we've always had is you should coexist when possible. If there's not a coexistence possible, then of course you may have to have your own tower. I understand that, but I don't think you've exhausted that alternative yet from the sounds of it. Particularly if you don't know where the sign is.
Well, I believe that Seamus directed me to look...
Seamus is new, too, so.
Well...
And I'm too old, I remember all these old things. So it's okay. I just, I, I'm suggesting that as a suggestion. Number two, I, my real concern is, I really wanted to see what your design was down on the ground, how you were going to design the building down there. Because I kind of looked at it and it kind of looked like you were putting a cyclone fence around it and stuff like that and then I heard that maybe you're not going to do that, but I don't have a copy of what you're going to do. And I think I'd like to see that because I'd like to see how it's going to tie into the building that's currently there. To me, you would just tie in with the brick that looks like a building.
Correct.
Now, that's my opinion and I have absolutely no architectural knowledge at all, but it just seems like that's what I'd like to see, but I don't see that in here.
So we propose, we usually design the enclosure as a chain link with a green like privacy slating, which is what we propose. I recently was made aware that that's not aesthetically acceptable, so I do have alternative designs, which we have no problem incorporating into the design. We do it all the time. When it is a factor, Verizon is more than willing to modify to make it more aesthetically pleasing. I have two with me, but there's many options.
Well, and I, I just think that we probably need to see those type of options. I mean, if that's what I'm going to see, I'm not too excited to see that little slat in there with the little slats. I don't know why you don't build it with a concrete building that blends strictly into what's there already. And you'd never know you were having an operation in there except for the door.
Well, and that's what, that's one of the options that we can do right now. So, well, this is unpainted. I tried to find a painted one, so this...
I'm just telling you that, you know, I'd like to see that before I vote on something. I want to see exactly what I'm getting.
Okay.
Just like I'd like to see, if your best alternative is a tree, I have yet to see a tree that hides the cell tower portion. And I'm trying to find one and I'll be darned if every one I look at looks like a cell tower with green leaves sticking on it. So I'd rather see us put something else up there. And no, I don't have any idea what that might be, but, you know, I mean, we did the cell tower, the first person that came out that had a cell tower that was close to residential ended up making it a water tower. And I have to be honest with you, I'm tickled to death with what that came up with. You have a million options because you do this every day. I think something other than a tree that looks like a cell tower would be, my opinion, I would like to at least see what else we might be able to put there, if we have to go there. And I'm not convinced yet that you've used your alternatives around the site, like the port, like the rice growers right next door that have, they're much taller than 85 feet. I mean, they're probably a couple hundred feet in the air. I'd just like to make sure that we've exhausted all those alternatives.
Okay. Well, I can say since this started in 2013, that from Verizon's standpoint, we have exhausted many of our alternatives. We have spent a lot of money talking to different, first of all, we started on that site with the lattice tower on River Road. That was moved because of the redevelopment of West SAC. We are now two years into this. We have done environmentals, we have done A&E, we have done surveys. So we have made quite an investment in trying to find the site and make it as good as possible and make it the right site and follow the policy. So if you are telling me that you do want it moved, you do want a new design, you're going to have to tell me more specifically what you want so I can take it back and say, this is what...
If, if you're asking my opinion, I think that if you go to that site, your site should blend in to the outside operation. I don't want to know that there's a cell tower operation down below. Why you couldn't build a building that would blend in with the building that's currently there makes logical sense to me. If we have to have a... If we have to have a tree, if that's our only option is a tree, I'd like to see what kind of tree you're proposing to have there and a photo of it, so I could see what it looks like and if it really does look like a tree. The one I'm seeing on here just looks like a cell tower with branches on it. Okay? Now, and then secondarily, I don't know why you couldn't come up with something different than a tree. Again, no idea what that might be, but the other people came up with a water tower. I don't know what you might be able to come up with that would fit the area. And then thirdly, and I mean, my biggest concern is that we haven't tried to go on to another site, and the site I'm saying is the one within the port that has the towers that are much higher than anything you've even asked for. And there's openings, according to David, there may be openings on that site. They hadn't thought about it. Seamus didn't know there was one there. I just happened to remember we did that one before, so.
Is that within the search ring? That's my question. I don't know-
Across the street from where you are.
So it's in that circle? Because I'm not from west-
You know where the water tower is? Just a couple hundred feet from the water tower, you'd be right there.
Katie, can we put up the Seamus, the map Seamus had in the beginning, please?
I, you know, I'm not trying to be argumentative here. I just was trying to tell you, if you're asking my, what my questions are, those are my questions. I'd like to see what we're voting on. And I haven't seen that yet, except I see that on the thing that says we're going to have a chain link fence. Even though you say you're changing it, I haven't seen that. No, that's the water tower. The thing's just at the, about where the line is, is about where the-
Yeah, the Rice silos are just off this map to the west, but the water tank is visible toward the lower, lower right, I'm assuming, lower left corner, you know, on the port.
But I think you'd also be, on top of everything else, you'd be higher than what you're even requesting, so it'd probably be even better for you.
Well, unfortunately, I can't answer that, because I'm not an RF engineer, and they have to make that evaluation. Sometimes, and I know this goes against, you know, what laypeople would imagine, too high can be a factor, depending on what they're trying to talk to. So, and if it's outside of the ring and it's too close to another tower, it ends up canceling out the other tower. So that's why I need to stay close to the ring.
It's just right by the water tower.
So I will look at it. I know I looked at Google Earth when Seamus gave me the addresses today, but that's something technical that I would have to go back to the engineers to ask about.
Thank you.
I was kind of teetering on our discussion here. We're kind of giving comments on two different approaches. One is location, and the second is design. As much as, you know, I would like to have an answer or direction about location, this is a hearing, and if it does get continued, I want to, I do want to make sure that we get as much information to the applicant as possible. So I'm still moving, I'm still thinking that we need to provide, if you have comments, provided on both the location and the application as submitted. So, jump the left side.
You're going to skip Martha?
Oh, yeah. I'm skipping Martha.
She said, oh, yeah. Thank you for your, for coming this evening with this application. I think I'll just piggyback on what Commissioner Moore said. I actually do very much sympathize with, you know, your exhaustive site search. For me personally, can't speak for the other commissioners, but for me personally, it would be sufficient if you and your real estate team, your, I guess your site acquisition team, explored areas in and around the industrial areas, kind of along the, basically near the intersection of Stone, and I don't know if it's Harbor or Lake Washington at that point, is it Harbor? No, not Harbor, Lake Washington, I guess.
Yeah.
Industrial, the street changes names. But if you could explore areas in that vicinity, I'm sure that staff can give you at least kind of property, you know, property names or owner locations. It would be sufficient for me if you looked at properties within really a five hundred, one thousand foot radius of where you're currently looking. That being said, I understand residents' concerns, but there's a lot that we, as a planning commission, are limited under federal law. And so, base, long story short, we can essentially be overridden. And I just want to make sure that, you know, you understand that when, if and when we make a decision to approve, whether it's this tower or a forthcoming tower, we are going to approve additional cell phone towers in our community. That's just, it's going to continue to happen. I think we can, you know, do our best to work with applicants to find a good site. In regards to aesthetics, I share a similar concern about the proposed ground level coverings. I'd really like to see that explored a lot more thoroughly. Certainly, I can't see any place in our community where I would be comfortable approving aesthetics where it was a chain link fence with barbed wire on top. I really am uncomfortable with that, even if it were a completely industrial area. I agree with Commissioner Moore that I would like to see something that is incorporated into that area. In this particular area, I think something that would blend in with the material, texture, and color of an existing building would be great, whether that's, you know, concrete blocks painted white, that's fine. We've gotten proposals, I think that we've approved, where it's looked sort of like a farmhouse and it's more an agricultural area. As long as it's something that is contextual, that's great. And I do think that we are comfortable with something that's industrial looking. So it doesn't have to be expensive, but just something that isn't, for lack of a better term, see-through, even if you do have the slats, you can kind of see through, and certainly not barbed wire fencing on top. And then as far as aesthetics, I agree. I think that you probably have some good options for us in this particular area, whether it's at the site that you've proposed or in or around the kind of port area or the rice growers collaborative. I think that an industrial look is best. I agree, I don't think that a tree matches this area at all. I think a mock water tower is a good solution. And honestly, something that isn't, the version, whatever, I don't know what to call it, the version of the monopole that isn't a tree is acceptable to me, as long as there's some sort of covering. So if it's not a water tower, it's, I don't know, a water, I'd be very comfortable with a water tower aesthetic. So those are, those are my, it's my feedback.
Thank you. Andy? No? Okay. Monica?
I do appreciate the need for the coverage that is being considered and the residents' concerns, and I also understand our limitations on the decisions we can make as far as the location because of the coverage area that, that the applicant is seeking to address. And under the state and federal laws, I think we need to address the coverage area first. I'm not sure, from my understanding, you know, considering Commissioner Moore's comments and Commissioner Austin's recommendation, that I am, you know, completely knowledgeable that we have exhausted the location, but it's not going to be that much farther from the residence.
Right.
Where, I don't think we're going to be able to resolve that. I think that, given that we, you know, sometimes research shows things are different. Sometimes other researchers have conflicting information on the internet. There's a whole bunch of stuff on the internet. I don't believe everything that's on the internet personally. There could be, I've experienced that. But if the FCC has said that under certain height requirements, that, you know, residents can be safe, and we always have to monitor that and, you know, get feedback as we move forward, and, but we're still restricted under the current requirements. And, you know, the next area of, of, you know, our purview of what we can accomplish is the aesthetic appearance. And I'd like to, I'm not sure if a water tower is, you know, is the answer. I don't have a specific response, other than what Commissioner Moore has suggested, that it blends in with the building look that is matching the location. Maybe a water tower is going to look pretty good. I, you know, and we can come up with some suggestions between now and the next meeting, if this is, you know, carried over. But in the meantime, yeah, I don't, I don't think that the monopine is, in looking at that, I haven't seen any that I've liked myself. And so I'm also interested in a little more information on, you know, what the appearance is going to look like and, you know, having the additional components out there, you know, how it's going to be structured so that it doesn't look terrible out there. It doesn't matter, it could be just buildings out there, the residents, and, you know, not in your backyard. I totally understand, having to look at something like that, it would, it would be terrible, and you want to, you know, take care of your property values and what's going on out there. So just your contributions on that, we would be interested, you know, hopefully, you know, just look at providing feedback to staff.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wells. Before I get, I actually have some comments and some follow-up questions as well. But before I get to that, I'm just saying right now that I'm getting the sense that the commission is going to want to continue this, because I'm hearing more questions than statements. And so I'll probably be asking staff in a little while for potential dates, so we can say with date certain, or we could leave it with date uncertain, if the commission so chooses to continue this item.
Given when we're likely to meet again, we can, if it is continued, we can do it to a date uncertain, and we'll re-notice.
Okay, okay. Getting back to a couple, and then I'll try and summarize some of the comments that I heard as well. I had a question, that open spot on the water tower at sixty feet, at sixty feet. If, I understand that you have found additional carriers for co-location on your tower, which I greatly appreciate, by the way. We do try and co-locate as much as possible. And that just means sticking as many carriers on one tower as possible to limit the number of towers we have going up around town. And we have pretty strict rules about how many towers can go up, and the fact that no other tower can go up until the others are full. That being said, if there's an open spot on the water tower, we would need to explore why that doesn't work for Verizon.
Okay. Now, that, I probably, that was a very brief conversation that I had with Rick at the Port of West Sacramento, very brief. So I don't know the full extent of the facts regarding that water tower. So I will look into that. I do know that on another project, we were interested in going on a Port of West SAC property, and I know that the price was prohibitive. It was almost double what our other lease rates were at other locations. I think that that may have changed since I last spoke to Mr. Toft, but I will definitely get a hold of him again and find out, and find out more information about how tall it is and things like that. But I do want to emphasize that this is not, I mean, this is not easy to just change the design. I mean, we're, the enclosure is not easy, but it's something that we can absolutely do. To change the tower is going to take at least two to six weeks for a new survey, a new A&E, just so you are aware. So that's one aspect of the design change. The other aspect of location will set back the whole project. It could be another three to six months, because it takes a very long time to go back and forth with landowners, to get them to call you back, to talk about, you know, the facts and circumstances, you know, where can we go here, what do you think about this? So I just want to make sure that you guys are aware that this is something that will change the whole site plan, not that we know that we have a choice in this, but, you know, it is pretty serious for Verizon. So I will look into location, the water tower, and also the Rice Silo, correct? Those are the two? And I would like to know-
Somebody knows what I'm talking about.
Okay. And it would be helpful to know too, that if those were two places that we may go, that it would lessen the neighborhood's problems, because we don't, okay. 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 So that's a good reason also for us to take upon all this new efforts. And, okay, so are you satisfied with those two locations, or is there something else that you're interested in us looking into?
I would actually recommend, because you're referencing the port, and I don't want to, I specifically don't, I want to emphasize that we're not trying to encourage you to locate on the port. On the vicinity map that you have up, under the word project for project location, specifically under the word, or under the letter P, that is a very tall building. That's the Farmers Rice Cooperative. That is not Port.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I'm not trying to tell you to go on to a specific site, because I certainly don't know if it works for you. I was just making the comment that I thought I remember us putting a site on that big silo. That silo's the tallest thing out there. And you just said that you never even looked at it. I was just asking if you used the other alternatives. And like Bernadette said, you know, there may be something else out there that's even better. I don't know that. I was just making a comment. So my comment is, I know there's another site out there. We've just talked about the water tower has an opening, you think, and I think that there's sites up on the big tall silos. If any of those are true, you might be able to work in right there, and it'd be just kind of fitting in that something that's already there. Maybe it doesn't work. If that's the case, you know, you'll be back telling us it just doesn't work. I don't know. I was just making sure we'd used all our alternatives that we could.
Okay. For the record, I don't know for a fact that we did or did not talk to the Rice Silo building. I've, I haven't been with this project the whole two years, so.
It's okay. I don't either. So I was just asking that you take a second look.
Thanks. Since staff didn't bring up the previous lattice tower on South River Road, was that relocated, that was relocated? I believe we actually voted on the, the spot that it was moved to.
Yeah, that one was a windmill at one time. It was put up at the city property back in 2004. That is a site that the city ultimately does plan to, you know, repurpose. You know, there's nothing imminent on that property. We would expect that that tower would probably be relocated at some point in time and likely remain on city and/or park property. But there's nothing imminent about, you know, moving it.
Okay, understood. Sorry, I was mistaken in another project, so. I do believe we have quite a few comments. And I do, I would like to, you know, thank you for your application, and stress that even though our comments are very direct, we do understand that, you know, when we send something back that was not intended to be go back, we do understand that this is extra work, and it will require extra work, but we also have a responsibility to meet the requirements of our policy. And there are, there are just too many questions at this point, so. With that, I think I have, oh, so for, I did say I was going to summarize a few things, so. For our concerns, the concerns, the primary concerns I'm hearing are with location, and specifically being able to show that we have exhausted alternatives. So if you could explore the area around your proposed location, that could include the port, but is not limited to the port, for example, the Farmers Rice Cooperative. Now, I can't direct you to a business. I'm just listing that as an example of a tall building right next door. The fact, the water tower opening, if you could check back with Rick Toft, who's the business manager of the port. And also regarding the pricing of the port as being prohibitive. And then for the aesthetics, I think the concerns, you know, the basic concern has to do with its location, again, right along the street. It's kind of an odd location, being there on the corner. I'm not sure if it's- I'm not sure if it's, um, if you're able to move it back on the lot. We actually didn't talk about that. Um, but that could be a discussion. Or design alternatives with, that blend in with, uh, the surrounding, uh, business there. I will say, I did think about other tower options. Um, the stealth design is difficult, especially you're in a business park next to industrial and residential. There isn't an overall design aesthetic, uh, right there, so it's gonna be tricky. I'm glad, uh, that's your job and not mine. So, I, uh, are there any comments that I missed, uh, directions that we, we would like feedback on?
Can, can I-
And just defend the surround, I know, I think you just mentioned that, but the-
I generalized.
Right.
Just blending into the design aesthetic.
Wanna make really sure. Personally, I probably will not approve the aesthetics of something that has barbed wire on the top. Just put that out there.
No, that's fine. That's good to know, 'cause I, I will be back. I have two more sites in West SAC, so that's, all of this will help me in the future. Um, and I, you know what, I did want to address the corner location and I forgot because I'm a really nervous public speaker, if you can't tell. Uh, but the reason that it's at that corner is because if you keep going, you pull into the parking lot and there's the little space of grass where we're, we're going. It's essentially the front yard of the, um, the main office. If you keep going, it's the, um, gate to go into their parking lot. And it's where all their businesses transacted and they are very busy throughout the day. So, it was actually the landlord's direction that they wanted us to be in that corner because there was no other place inside that L shape um, that wouldn't get in the way of their day-to-day business activity. And we would have been inside kind of their kind of inner sanctum, which would, is locked. And if anything were to happen, we need twenty-four-seven access if something went down. So, that's why we were placed in that corner location. Now, my idea is if these alternative locations don't work out and I come and am able to explain that to you, then the next time I will be here will be with a covered enclosure that matches the building and most likely a water tower. Or there's also stealth towers out there that kind of have panels. They're like tri-legged designs, so I can possibly bring that up next time I'm here. But that's what I'm understanding to be what you're looking for. Hopefully, I'm correct.
Mr. Tilly?
Yes, uh, um, we, I think your, your summary was accurate for what we heard tonight. There's sort of three primary, you know, topics, which is the other sites, um, the design, the enclosure, then the design of the tower itself. So, uh, we'll work with the applicant on those topics and then return when we have-
Do we need a, do we need a motion?
We need to move to, to continue-
Continue to a date uncertain.
So, a move to continue to a date uncertain?
Moved by Commissioner Guerrero. I'm sorry, oh, you're right. I have to, uh, technically, I don't own this one, but I will close the, uh, public comment period. Um, moved by Commissioner Guerrero.
I second. Oh, go ahead, I'll put Commissioner Moore second.
I'll take seconded by Mr. Moore. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Mr. Tilly?
Yes, um, this will be our, obviously, our last meeting for the year, so I would like to thank the commission for your service this year. And, uh, we will be taking the month of January off, um, especially since our second meeting would fall on the evening when the chamber has its big, um, function downstairs. And so, we'll be, look to be back in February.
Thank you. Thank you, staff. Okay, um, informal discussion?
Motion to adjourn.
And so, move.